Is this on? Is this working?
Yes.
Great, all right. Well, it is awesome to be at the Don Tyson School of Innovation and just want to thank so many folks for making this happen, obviously led by Dr. Owens, but the whole team here, I want to thank the administration here at Don Tyson, Shannon Tischer, Damon Danelle, Amy Harrison, Kelly Burts, and then the communication and media team led by Trent Jones, who I know really had to do a lot of work to make all this technology happen, Seth Bezo, Stephen Lightfoot, Chris Button, Dustin Mapes, and then Paul Miller and Michael Terleski. So, really thank everybody here with the School of Innovation and with the district as a whole. Also want to thank Ms. McFetrich, who really helped think through the day and how we can see this school, which is truly innovative, literally and figuratively, while we're here today. And so, we're going to, I'll tell you about that in just a minute. Also, of course, want to thank Mr. and Ms. Wendell, who made all this happen as well, including our day tomorrow, which we're going to have a fairly long day in two districts tomorrow. So, the great thing about this trip is rather than just seeing one district, we're really getting to see three different districts, three very different districts, while we're in Northwest Arkansas. So, thanks to everybody for making that happen. We have a fairly manageable agenda. We purposefully have put off some things that could be put off to limit the amount of folks who needed to come to Northwest Arkansas, but, and it has gotten a little more manageable because we have lost an item this morning. There was a, on the first action item of the afternoon, no, first action item of the morning, apologize, the health standards, those, a portion of those did not get posted. And so, because they did not get posted, and therefore, we in the public did not get a chance to see those in advance, we're going to delay that to April. So, expect to see those in their full form in April. I also wanted to let the board know that we do have some public comment that came in in advance of the meeting, and so, you know, according to our rules, because those three public comment, two of whom are going to be in person, one of whom will be in written form, those are automatically on the agenda for three minutes as, according to our operating procedures. If anybody else wishes to add public comment, then we would vote, consider a vote to add those. The other thing I want to note about the day is we are going to make a, do a hard stop at noon today, so that we can get lunch, but also spend some time touring the school. And so, in fact, we will start the afternoon action agenda at 1:30. So, we're going to take a little bit longer lunch break, so we can see this school. I know students are going to be involved in that tour, and so, I'm looking forward to that as well. So, that's our game plan for the day, everybody. Any questions there? All right. So, on the change of the agenda, does anyone have any consent items that they would like to ask questions about? Anything? Ms. Zook?
Is this on already?
I think it, I think it picks you up automatically.
Okay.
That's dangerous, I know.
Yes, I know, for me. I continue to be troubled on item number three. Do you want me to comment now, or you just want to, I don't really want to.
Is that the only one you have?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? I had one quick question, I have a quick question on five, but it may be one of those things, Ms. McLaughlin may be able to, you are here with that item. So, I'm going to ask you a quick question on five as well. So, why don't we go to three first, Ms. Zook?
Yes, it is troubling to me that since the co-ops are there to give training and reinforcement and those kinds of things, that we continue to hire people out of area, particularly in the special ed area. It's hard enough to know everything you need to know and give the kind of guidance you need to give for special ed in the classroom, but to be the one who's helping guide maybe a person out of area in the classroom, you know, so if somebody can clarify or give me some help with that, I see heads nodding.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Ms. Jackson's here, and we're glad you're here.
Please forgive me.
I'm sorry.
I have a little bit of laryngitis, but I'm fine. I did call about this one because I knew that it would be, it would be a question that state board would have, and this is the ALE. This particular co-op runs an ALE for over the county, and this is an ALE teacher. So, she is, she's a teacher, so she's not someone providing services from the co-op. On that, that one is, the Archford one.
Yes.
She's a teacher in the ALE.
Okay.
But the co-op runs the ALE.
Okay, and do you have any idea why it said special ed?
She's a special ed teacher for the ALE, in the ALE setting, Alternative Learning Environment.
Okay.
And then, the other one is a preschool teacher for this co-op. She's, they run the pre-K program, and she's a preschool teacher.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not the co-op specialist.
I appreciate you anticipating the question.
I did, thank you.
Great. Ms. McLaughlin, and this may, may need to wait, may need to get information from others, but on the Gifted and Talented report, I was just curious how, obviously, the change in, with Governor School's location for this upcoming year, if we had any updates on how applications were looking, any other updates on that, on that issue?
Number four or number five?
Number five, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything to do with Gifted and Talented.
No, but you said Gifted and Talented.
Well, Ms. McLaughlin's, oh, I apologize. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Never mind, never mind. I was looking at the wrong one, okay. Is anybody here on Gifted and Talented this morning?
No, Stacy Smith was going to be here, and when we found the glitch this morning, I said, "Don't drive up."
Okay.
So, we can get whatever answers, though, you need, like at the break, if Gina maybe could call or text.
Okay. Okay. I was just curious, it was a general question about, with that, you know, significant change in Governor School, I was just curious how the planning was going and how the applications were looking for this coming summer. And if it, if it's not possible to get that today, if we could just get an email report on that, it's not, nothing urgent. I apologize, Ms. McLaughlin, for putting you on edge. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Zook. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right. Okay, we now move down to the action agenda item number two, and Mr. Ballard is here for a flurry of charter authorizing panel decisions.
Good morning. So, we have item two, which is a consideration of charter authorizing panel decisions, summary information. The first subsection on that, A, is a consideration of the charter authorizing panel action on open enrollment charter school amendment to Capital City Lighthouse Charter School. On February 25, 2019, representatives of Capital City Lighthouse appeared before the charter authorizing panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing on the charter authorizing panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
All right. Any questions on this item to my right? All right, this is the Capital City Lighthouse. Any questions to my left? Ms. Zook?
No, I was at the meeting, and basically, there are two requests where instead of having K-12, they have K-8, and any student that's currently in the North Little Rock location who wants to continue to the high school, they will transport them to Jacksonville.
Good. Any other questions? All right. Everybody good? Okay. So, the proper motion here is to review or to not review the charter authorizing panel's decision?
I move to not review. Second?
All right. Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Newton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous, all right. Next up is the Exalt Academy Amendment.
So, on February 25, 2019, representatives of Exalt Academy of Southwest Little Rock appeared before the charter authorizing panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing on the charter authorizing panel's determination at the next, that's the next State Board's meeting.
All right. Any questions to my left? Any questions on this item? Or comments? Anything to my right? Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on this item to review or to not review.
Move not to review. Second?
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, thank you. Future School of Fort Smith.
All right. So, in the light time, the Future School of Fort Smith also appeared on February 25, 2019. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request to their charter. There was no request for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel submitted. The State Board may exercise, though, a right to review and conduct a hearing on the charter authorizing panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Right. Ms. Dean?
It's not necessarily to do with this, but we've passed a lot of these waivers in the past on school start date, and I know there's a bill in the legislature that, to change that. How would that affect the waivers that we've already passed?
Mary Claire Hyatt, Arkansas Department of Education. So, I think we're internally communicating on how we're going to deal with moving forward to make sure it happens in a more seamless transition process of how, when laws and rules change, how they'll impact waivers. Right now, you've kind of seen this happen once, at least with the change of the standards, how that impacted the waivers. We brought them all to you, kind of in chunks, in order to get everyone transitioned over as they need. I think that's something that we'll continue to do in the future, is to work with schools that have waivers, make sure that they know that the laws and rules that they have waivers of have changed, and that they may or may not need to consider coming before you to update that waiver. And we can also do it in kind of these big chunks, how we've done before.
Well, I would just add to that, I think we would need to take into account the context of the legislation. So, in your specific example, if the legislature says we want school to start the first Monday bef, or the Monday before Labor Day, I think the bar changes on granting waivers at that point. And I think we would have to, you all would have to take into account, you know, the, any special circumstances or anything like that. I think that would make it much more difficult for us to just do a blanket waiver by co-op or region or anything like we did with the start date previously.
So, the law would take precedence, is that kind of what you're saying?
I think in this case, yes, it would.
And would that do away with the waivers that we've already granted?
Well, and that's where Ms. Hyatt was talking about, we would have to see what that transition is. I would, I wouldn't want to make a blanket statement on that.
Okay.
For any type of law change and how it affects waivers, because we've seen that before, that minor changes in the law that don't change the essence of the waiver, but I think in the school start date, that would change the essence of the waiver. And we would have to come back considerably, review that.
Yeah, because, you know, most of the changes in law that have occurred after waivers have actually been in the, in the direction of.
Right.
Making it easier.
Yeah.
This is actually in the opposite direction. It is an exceptional case. It raises great questions, because, I mean, districts, but this, I glanced at that legislation, it does not explicitly bar the request of waivers, right?
As originally filed, it did not. I know that was an amendment that the sponsor was contemplating adding to the bill.
Okay. And that would obviously change, but if a district could still come ask, right?
They could ask, yes.
But that would be the judgment of the, of the board, so.
And as the commissioner said, in that case, if it was a change completely of the law, where it made the previous waiver not exist, kind of because that law didn't exist, it would be new. But we have seen changes in law that didn't impact the reason why the school had the waiver and didn't require any action on the part of the school or the department in order to maintain that waiver.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this, on this issue? Any, any comments or concerns? I hear folks on the, is somebody on the phone? Oops. You hung up, Ms. Dean.
Well, I were.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then. I want to be, do we expect anybody was calling in, Ms. Wendell, that on an item this morn, which one?
Oh, they're going back into it.
Okay. Okay. Should we hold for a minute to be sure that they get the chance to call in, or should we, do you think we can move on?
They were already on.
Okay. Let's go ahead and act on this item, and then maybe take a break and be sure that we get, get the phone back up and running. I don't see any questions on this for the district, so I think this is probably fair game to move forward. So, on, on this item, this is the Future School of Fort Smith, the proper motion is to, to review or not to review?
Move to not review.
You entered six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. McFetrich, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay. Let's take a pause for a minute and be sure we're, we're available.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID. Enter your participation.
Hello? I think we cut them off. They may have to call back in.
Do we need to call back in? Yeah, do we need to call back in?
Hello?
Nope. Hello, you have this void, it's your school.
Okay. Well, we just passed your, you're good to go. We, we voted you to review. So, any, any questions you have about that?
I know, that's great, thanks for letting me know.
Okay. Well, sorry, we.
That was my phone, sorry.
That's okay, sorry we couldn't see the live stream, I would like to see, that's okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else on the call?
Is there anybody else on the call?
Jeanne Long is on the call.
Yep, Alex Nogarola from Southeast Arkansas Prep.
Okay, you're, you're up in a couple of items, and.
Dear Hanson Little Rock Preparatory Academy.
Okay, and you're next up?
I'm next up, okay, those two.
Okay. All right. So, the next item is Lisa Academy, obviously, folks from Lisa Academy are here, so, Mr. Ballard?
All right, so, consideration for charter authorizing panel action on open enrollment charter school amendment to Lisa Academy on February 25, 2019.
Mr. Ballard, just a second, can folks on the phone hear Mr. Ballard?
Can you hear audio?
Can the folks on the phone hear Mr. Ballard?
It's a little low.
No.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll speak up.
Okay, we're going to try to speak louder.
If you could just do a test and say.
Okay. Is that, say a little bit louder? Like the volume?
Is that helpful?
Okay. All right. Is that better?
Is that better? On the sound?
On the sound? Yes, it is.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay. Sorry for interrupting.
No worries. On February 25, 2019, representatives of Lisa Academy appeared before the charter authorizing panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing on the charter authorizing panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
All right, great. And obviously, folks from Lisa are here, if there are any clarifying questions. I'll start down here to my left, any questions about this? Ms. McFetrich?
I know one of the panelists in, on the voting sheet mentioned concern about budget and some budget concerns. Is that something that they can speak to today? Is that appropriate?
Sure. If you'll come, come on up and just remind us of your name for the record. Welcome, and thanks for driving up this morning.
I'm Lou Ann Barone, Assistant Superintendent for Lisa Academy. Were there particular questions that you wanted answered about the budget? I think there were some questions about the staffing that we had projected in the budget at 29 teachers for the first year and 29 teachers for the second year. That was some of the discussion at the meeting, I know Ms. Zook was there, and the reason for that was that we were not going to have full class rooms the first year, so there was still room for growing the enrollment without increasing the staffing in that second year. I don't know if that's the question you have, but that was one of them discussed. The other was a question about an ELL staff member, and we plan to have a full-time staff member for that, so.
I think that's good.
Okay. Any additional questions on, on this side? Ms. Zook, or Dr. Hill?
I don't think it was asked at charter panel, and I don't want to, to review to get this answer, but could you give me a little more explanation on the salary, the beginning salary waiver?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, didn't you ask for a waiver on the salary?
Did we?
We didn't ask waiver, we have already, you know, waivers, you know, since Lisa Academy opened.
Right, I know it was coming up to standard, but I also know that the legislature and the governor has now signed a bill that an increase will be $1,000 to the base each of the next four years.
We are currently, you know, giving more than minimum salary. Minimum salary is around 32 right now, our minimum salary is 35. We have also bonuses around 36, so we are above the minimum salary, even we have the, you know, waivers.
Okay, that clarifies it, thank you so much.
Great. If you could just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Party Progress Superintendent.
Great, thanks, good to see you. Okay, any additional questions, Ms. Dean? Any questions to my right?
Just, just one, one quick question, Dr. Barth. The, the transfer between Montessori and then to the Lisa curriculum, are you thinking about extra training for teachers next summer, or?
We are actually currently doing that now, we're actually working with them now in a consulting way. We're providing training already on some of the online platforms we're using. We've worked with the administration there to make some changes to grade level instruction already, and so, I think that transition will be fairly smooth. We also plan to work with the teachers there that we can work with in terms of certification and qualifications, and also, we have some teachers from our Little Rock area who are interested in moving there to provide some support in transition there, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
A little more general question, and this is obviously a big move for Lisa in terms of moving out of a fairly constrained geographical space into a broader geographical space. And, and in fact, I, I don't know that we've seen this exactly in my time on the board, we've typically seen folk, schools stay, you know, very more localized, our, you know, our management organizations kind of come in with, with a plan for, for multiple campuses in multiple places. Have you, as a school, kind of studied models of, not just in Arkansas, but in other places, of entities that have had that success of, of ramping up in that direction, and what lessons have you learned from, from that?
I haven't personally. I know we've looked at a lot of the data that's out there and, and looked at turnaround school stories and tried to learn from that. There's not, you know, a particular model that we're trying to follow, but just trying to implement the system that we found effective, you know, for our students in the Little Rock area, so.
Okay. And my additional question is, in terms of governance issues at the, at, in the Northwest Arkansas location, the, the plan is that, that it would be, would there be an advisory board in the Northwest Arkansas that would?
We plan to, immediately, we have openings on our advisory board, we plan to immediately invite members from the community there to be on the advisory board, and then consider adding a board, a governing board member when we have an opening, or if we decide to increase the number of board members.
Okay.
So, we want that representation.
Yeah, that would be my, my, my thought, I, I do have, you know, deep concerns when, when the governing boards really are pretty disconnected from the community, which they are, where the schools are primarily serving.
We've already had initial conversations with a couple of folks that we feel like would make strong advisory members for us that are open to that.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, Dr. L.
I did have a question, if y'all don't mind. I know you all are asking for a cap increase, are there plans for student recruitment prior to next summer? And then, in addition to that, do y'all provide transportation or have plans to provide transportation for students?
In terms of the recruitment, yes, we've actually posted an interest forum on our website and on, on Montessori's website, and have, I think, 114 or 15 families who are interested already. In addition, I think there were 134 of the current students who have said they want to re-enroll at Lisa next year, if this goes through. We plan, we actually have a website ready to roll over if we're approved. We've already done some preliminary planning for some advertising and recruitment, have already tentatively set our timeline in terms of application deadline and lottery, so we have that plan in place already and are ready to move forward with that if approved today. In terms of transportation, right now, no, we do not have a plan to provide transportation. We are, we're, you know, open to looking at if there are some options available, but right now, we don't have any.
We scheduled a visit with the Spring Day School District on April 2nd, so we will bring this item to their attention, so if we can come up with a plan with Spring Day School District, if we can use their buses, we are willing to provide transportation.
Any additional questions? Any questions that have arisen on this side? Okay, thank you all very much.
Dr. Barth, I just want to say, since the leaders of both of these systems are here, just to let y'all know, you know, we, we saw a situation in Little Rock with another school that kind of, we helped, but they, they wrote it down. We have a situation here that's different in that Ms. Paget and their team, their leadership, their board saw a situation that, you know, that it was, it was very difficult for them to make that decision, but I think they all agree that this was the right decision in that not just trying to hang on for the sake of hanging on, but trying to do something that's the right, was the right decision for kids and creating a partnership like this. So, it's, it is unusual, Dr. Barth mentioned it, it is highly unusual, but unusual doesn't mean wrong, and it's, I think, commendable that they were able to work together to come up with a solution. And we certainly, at the department, our Mr. Ballard and the folks in the charter unit have been very closely trying to assist in any way we can, so, and will continue to do that.
Right. All right, any additional questions?
I don't have a question, but I did want to, it's sort of off topic, but I wanted, while they're still here, to compliment them, attended their STEM festival, and in the effort to do what this board and ADE encourages, which is to collaborate, they had traditional public schools, they had open enrollment charters, they had conversion charters, they had over 2,000 students there, private schools came, so I commend Lisa for making the effort to collaborate with people who work with children all over the state.
Ms. Wendell, I know that last note on public comment that you sent me, is that general public comment at the end of the meeting, or is it's not tied to a specific item? Okay, great. Okay, thank you all very much.
I move that we not review. Second?
All right. Motion by Ms. Zook, second by Ms. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you all very much for, for being here, and it was helpful for y'all to have been here. Next up is the Little Rock Preparatory Academy charter, and we do have somebody from Little Rock Prep on the, on the phone.
All right. All right.
They had traditional public schools, they had open enrollment charters, they had conversion charters, they had over 2,000 students there, private schools came. So I commend LISA for making the effort to collaborate with people who work with children all over the state.
Ms. Wendell, I know that last note on public comment that you sent me, is, is that general public comment at the end of the meeting or is it's not tied to a specific item? Okay, great. Okay, thank you all very much.
I move that we not review.
All right. Motion by Ms. Zook, second by Ms. Dean. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you all very much for, for being here, and it was helpful for, for y'all to have been here. Next up is the Little Rock Preparatory Academy Charter, and we do have somebody from Little Rock Prep on the, on the phone.
All right. On February 25th, 2019, representatives of the Little Rock Preparatory Academy appeared before the charter authorizing panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No requests for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise their right of review and conduct a hearing on the charter authorizing's panel determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Okay. And if, who's on the phone from Little Rock Preparatory Academy?
Donna Broyles and Darrell Hinton. I'm the interim superintendent.
Great, thank you very much. Are, any questions to my right? On this item? Ms. Chambers?
This is where I had a question similar to Ms. Zook earlier about the minimum salary statute? Just a question about what the implications of that? Could you hear her?
Could you hear her? I can't hear.
Okay.
Okay, the question is, what is your current minimum salary? Well, right now, we have, it's our primary school. We pay associate teachers, those that don't have, it ranges between 30 and 39,000, depending on their experience. Our associate teachers usually start between 30 and 32, and our more experienced teachers usually go between 39 and 42. So we are reviewing the budget to get everything in alignment.
And they wanted to waive or change the base?
I can't hear.
So I'll follow up. So the question for Ms. Chambers was, are you looking to change the base salary?
Yes, and I, that is something that we are looking right now for the next school year, and because we not only want to be in alignment with what Governor Hutchinson has passed, but we also, I think it's very important for our teachers to have that base salary. So yes, we are looking at that right now with our budget for next year.
Ms. Chambers?
It is in current review.
Okay, and so you, you have a goal of raising it, is that correct?
Yes, yes, most definitely.
All right. You, you answered Ms. Chambers's head.
Mr. Ballard, why is the waiver necessary then?
So the question for those on the phone is, why is this, why is this waiver necessary?
Well, the waivers have always been in place, and I just took over in January. So we, charter schools have always had the waivers for teacher salaries, but we want to make sure that it's, we're not just following the waiver, that we are meeting the state, the state minimum requirement. So right now, the waiver is in place because it was already there. So does that answer that question, sir?
I think we're getting some more help, more help from Ms. Hyatt.
So I believe that the waiver is requested because they do not currently, this year, meet the minimum salary schedule. They have not had this waiver in the past, just to clarify. Other charter schools do have this waiver, most of them. Their current salary schedule doesn't meet the salary schedule in law, so they need it at least until they raise the salary, meet that. So it would be a new waiver for them because the current salary schedule doesn't meet the minimum salary schedule.
In the new law?
In the current law.
Current law.
In the current right.
I guess the similar question is, when the new law goes into effect, do we review the waivers from charters and from Act 1240?
I think it will depend on the schools, whether they intend, once the law changes, to meet the new salary schedule or not. So I think we'll have to review it when that happens to decide how we'll move forward with that, because some may want to continue with their, their current waiver that may not even need to be changed just because the salary schedule is changing. And then others may want to not have the waiver anymore because they want to meet the minimum salary schedule. So it will kind of depend on, once everything is done, what it looks like, and then each individual school and how they kind of want to proceed.
I guess this is off topic, but do we have any 1240 waivers for minimum salary schedule?
I think, and this is like off the top of my head, I think Helena West Helena has it, and they are the only ones that are traditional public school districts. I think there are a couple of district conversions that have it for their district conversion school, and I think Helena West Helena is the only traditional public school.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Question, Ms. Zook?
I think since this is an initiative specifically from the legislature and the governor, that we might want to, or might need to revisit because they have now set a floor. And I understand if a teacher signs a contract and wants to work there, that that's between the teacher and that, but since the governor has now said, we want the minimum to be this, and we want it to go up $1,000 each of the next few years, I don't know how you can, if we give it to a charter, then a rate, a traditional district can request it. And I don't know that we can deny it if it's given to the charter. So we may need to keep that on our plate to say, well, how can this be handled, or is this something that can be waived?
So if I may add something to that, that, that does play into it, it has to do with money. And, you know, we set aside the $60 million, and we're in the process of writing rules now, as we committed to when the bill was under discussion. And, and so one of the considerations for the rules, obviously, if you have a waiver, then are, should you be eligible for the funds? You know, right now, I think our draft says if you have a waiver, you're not eligible for the funds. So that, that may, that may nudge some schools and to make a different decision as it relates to waiver for minimum teacher salary.
So I've got a question that in many ways goes back to Ms. Newton's initial question. Here we have a situation where, where the law doesn't change in a way that totally undermines the, the old waiver, but it certainly alters the context in which that waiver was granted. And what, what does that do to those waivers?
So we've had this before, because since 2015, the minimum salary schedule has changed. But because it was simply the number, not the concept of having a minimum salary, we have not considered that as affecting the waivers. And so we've looked at it that way. In this case, again, the context being different, that it was a significant initiative with funding behind it, that, that, and I can't say that we, from a legal standpoint, have made a determination of, does it, does it make the waivers null and void? But those are things we're still working through. I don't know, Mary Claire, if you want to add to that?
I think he's absolutely right. We haven't looked at it to see, as it's written, how it changes the waivers. That is something that we could do and report back to you on that, if that would be helpful information for you. But it, it kind of, we'll just have to look at it and see, as it's written, what parts of the law does it change? Is it just the numbers, or is it other significant parts of the law? How does the initiative of the whole thing, rather than just the numbers, impact the waiver? And then kind of come to some sort of decision? And that's kind of the process, I think, with any significant law change, we would go through to decide how it impacts waivers.
If, if we decided to review, would that give you another month to kind of think through this process and see what might be some future implications or?
We can, I think we can do it without you reviewing if you wanted to grant this waiver. If you do want to review this for Little Rock Prep, I mean, that's up to you guys. We can come back next month as the department and give you more information kind of on our, once we've had time to look at all of it.
Mary Claire, as it, as it relates to? Just a second. Commissioner was about to say something. Yeah, so it may, it may be the same, it may be the same thing. I think there was a misunderstanding. We thought they had this waiver already. Is, and this is still, we're catching things in the transition. So this isn't something that's really prospective, it's trying to resolve a situation that we have found recently.
Right. I, it, it's not a standards transition because it's the law, not a standard, but I do think that that entire standards transition process, we looked at all of the waivers kind of with a fine-tooth comb to make sure everyone had fully effectuated waivers. And like many schools, it was, it, they realized that they were missing waivers that they thought they had. Also, with the new standards for accreditation monitoring tool, that's bringing to light issues that may not have been uncovered in such a timely way in the past. So I do think this is a situation where Little Rock Prep thought they had this waiver, didn't have the waiver, now are coming and requesting the waiver to avoid any type of standards issue.
So they actually need it for this current school year?
Yes. They need it for this school year because under the current minimum salary law, their minimum salary schedule does not meet the current law.
And do we know for how many years, I know, I know you're on the phone, for how many years they've been in, in conflict with?
I can find out.
That's fine.
I don't have it right in front of me.
But probably more than just this year. It's been a multi-year.
So I don't think that they've had this waiver in the past. It's not a situation where they had it and lost it. So I don't, I don't know what their salary schedule has looked like in the past. I just can say that this year, it doesn't meet, without going back and reviewing their previous years.
How many years was this waiver for?
I'm going to punt that to Reggie.
Okay. We, we know you're on the phone, but we're trying to get some clarifications before we come to you.
I would have to, I apologize. We're going to pull it up here in a second for you guys.
Okay.
I think once they get a waiver, it's until they're reviewed on a charter.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
So it would be until 2020.
Because they were some, just, okay, 2020, okay. So let's go to, to the school on the phone. Again, identify yourself just for the record.
For the record.
It's Donna Broyles.
Thank you, Ms. Broyles.
Donna Broyles, the interim superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Broyles, go ahead.
Well, I want you guys to know that we're doing everything. We're working very closely with the charter office and with ADE. We, we've met quite extensively to make sure that we have everything in compliance and in code, because we want our teachers to get paid. They're, they deserve to get that, and we are reviewing the budget for next year very extensively. And we are, again, as I said, we're meeting with Mr. Ballard and with Perry and Ms. Coffin on making sure that everything for prep is in, Little Rock Prep is in compliance. So anything that you guys need for review, we can make sure to get that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, so I think the, is everybody clear on the facts? As clear as we can be, okay? And so the question is, to review, and as I heard from Ms. Newton, it would not just be, it would be on this case, but it's the broader issue. Are, are you comfortable moving forward to not review, allowing this to move, this to move forward?
They actually need it for this year, though, don't they?
They do. And apparently, but it has to be until 2020, correct?
They, they didn't set a different timeline in their waiver request, so as their waiver request is written, it would be until 2020. If that's something you might consider changing or asking them to change, then you would need to review it to make that, because today you can only vote to review or to not review.
I move to review.
All right. Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. McFetrich. Any further discussion, discussion on this item? Okay, why don't we do a roll call on this?
Ms. Zook?
No.
Dr. Hill?
No.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Three yeas, four nays.
And so if, I vote yea, it.
So I would make it four and four.
Right, and what would that do to the? Miss, I need a miss.
Motion would fail.
No matter what. Okay, all right. Okay. I would have voted yes. Okay, so, in fact, I won't vote, but yes, and the motion fails, so we need a motion on the other side? Can we, this is?
I move not to review. Second?
Okay, motion by Ms. Zook, second by Ms. Chambers.
Can I ask a process question?
You're about to read my mind.
What happens if it's four and four again?
I don't know. I will go with, well, if that happens, my suggestion would be, let's move it to the afternoon to give me an opportunity to research that and figure that out, because I don't know the answer off the top of my head, and I don't think our operating procedures anticipate that happening. So I will go find out.
Could we stop and maybe have a discussion on both sides? Maybe we can resolve this now?
Yeah, yeah. So let's go, look for the discussion.
My, my reasoning on, on reviewing was not the school for this year, was just that, that we would have another month to think, think through how this waiver would affect statewide, all charters and all teachers about the minimum salary, and that would just give us more time. You know, I, I don't have any problem foreseeing in the future that, that this school would get that waiver next month. It would just be a month delayed. So that was kind of my thoughts behind the putting off a month.
Yeah, I think my reasoning was because a review is that they come in and we provide them with the questions they have, and I'm not sure they have the answer to the questions that we have. I think that will come from legal and a lot of study. And so since this was an effort for them to get in compliance, and I think it was nice that they caught it and they came to us, that, so my reasoning was the questions I might have had nothing to do with Little Rock Prep. It just had to do with the bigger picture of the minimum wage in general.
Ms. Dean?
So delaying it in one month, what does that do for, for the school?
So what month is this? April would be when you would hear it. I don't believe that the standards report is until May, and so I don't think it would result in any type of violation on their standards report. And if you wanted to, and this is not a suggestion, it's just going through the options. If you wanted to limit this type of waiver in any way to a specific amount of time, then you could do that if you reviewed it, but you can't alter the waiver today because you can just view, vote to review or not review. Or any other alterations you may want to make to a waiver, you would have to review it in order to do that. But Ms. Zook is correct that the questions that you would be asking would be to the charter applicant and not really to the department, which is why I said the department would be happy to provide that information regardless of if you review or not review.
That was, you just answered my question, because I thought you said that earlier, that we could provide that information for us without the review.
A difficult, a process question. We have to decide this today, correct? It cannot be tabled until next month, which would get us exactly where I think we need to be.
I think that, I don't think there would be a prohibition on you tabling it, but I think it would have the same impact as if you voted to review, if you voted to table it.
I think what would be different about tabling it, it would be a decision to review or not review in a month, not a full-fledged hearing on the waiver, which I think we're wanting to prevent, both because it puts a burden on the, on the school, but also because of, as we said, it's really not their, it's not their issue, it's really us getting clear on the, on the, on the issue.
Just timeline-wise, if you waited until April and then in April voted to review, that wouldn't be heard until May, which may cause issues with the standards for accreditation report, because that is pulled in May. And that would only, I mean, if, if you voted to not review in April, that issue wouldn't come up. But if you did still vote to review in April, then come May, it, it may lead to issues on the standards for accreditation report.
Although it would be possible to have a special meeting if it was going to bump up against the, the, get them in trouble in terms of standards.
That's correct.
Ms. Chambers?
I got totally confused in what you said there at the end, but, but I, kind of connecting the dots for me in terms of what I've heard and what my peers have said, our issue's not with the school. with the school, our issue's with the process and the implications of addressing this waiver issue as we go forward, and I think I heard there's more, this is not the only school that we'll need to go back and make that correction for, so is it possible to hear affirmatively that we can get the information we're interested in separately as a report from the Department of Education in April?
Yes, I think legal can put together some sort of information that, after communicating with all of the other departments specifically about teacher salary and how we'll plan to address that with waivers.
Commissioner also reminds me, we do have a special meeting that's already on the calendar for the 25th to, to hear the Lee County issue, it would be possible to table this item till then, that, I don't know if that's enough time for Lee County, that's a.
We're speedy.
Yeah. But that, that would be, that would be something that would maybe be a good compromise, I'll throw that out. Dr. Moore?
Yes, I think, I think my, I do, I do have specific questions for the school, but it did probably be for all charter schools that hold this waiver, and, and in that case, is there, when, when the new law were to go into effect, is that something where we could do a review, or is that only done when that charter's up for renewal?
Unless the waiver specifically says a different time period, the waiver is for the length of the current charter, some options that you may have though would be to ask that that be included in any type of reporting that already exists on the part of the charters, the charter unit could certainly reach out to the schools and ask if they would provide information that you guys are interested in about the waiver, so we could, I'm sure, figure out a way to help you guys get information, but in terms of reviewing the actual waiver, and it will also depend on how the law impacts the waiver, but let's say hypothetically it doesn't impact the waiver, you would not have a chance to review that until the waiver ends.
And this, this law does not have an emergency clause, correct? So we've got a little time, there is time.
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Just a point of clarification, so if, if they're granted the waiver, the waiver cannot be changed and it, it is extended through 2020?
That's correct.
One year, okay.
It would expire, I think, June, June 30th, 2020, so they're up for renewal this year, will begin, begin that renewal process, I think, in December, and so that's coming pretty quickly, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think my thought process was that, that this school, but I, to be fair, would want, again, would want to be for all schools with the waiver to ask, I hear them saying they want to pay their teachers at the minimum or above, but they're not doing it, are they, what are, what are their barriers, and how can those barriers be overcome? So that was my reasoning to ask for a review.
And I suspect that the different schools that have this waiver are gonna want to know that anyway, because they're right now planning their 1920 budgets.
Right.
So the quicker legal can give that information, and you may have to work with Bureau of Legislative Affairs or the Governor's Office, or, you know, this is probably an issue that the legislature didn't anticipate as a result of this law, so. Everybody's gonna want to know, because they don't want to be, they don't want to get a standards violation, they don't want to be on probation.
And this, this law does have an emergency clause, but it's July 1, emergency clause, not a, not a more immediate one, yes, yes, ma'am?
This is Donna Broyles with Prep, I wanted to let you guys know that our lead teachers are making more than the minimum requirements of the, of the salary, so because they make around $39,000, so I wanted to kind of give you that information now, because you guys have several questions, and I want to make sure, I'm headed to the doctor to rule out flu, but I wanted to make sure that you guys know that our lead teachers, because of our unique model that we have at the school, we have two teachers in the classroom, our associates make between 30 and 32,000, whereas our leads make 39,000, so that can give you a little bit more information as you're, as you're, as you're asking these questions. I don't know if that helps you right now, but, and that's set up for the elementary campus, and at the middle school campus, they make between 39 and 42,000, so just to kind of give you some of that background information as you're asking these questions for the salaries for this year.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I just want to be clear, I think we're all in consensus that we're not really picking on you, you are simply the first case that has come along on, on this issue, and we need to feel like we're getting it right for, for all schools, and, and if we, you know, if we can use your case to, to get some answers, that may, may serve all, all the students at these schools well, but I think we're, we're trying to figure out the right path to get there. We do have a motion.
Anything that we can do to help with that, we will certainly be willing to help with that.
All right, and please get well, we do have a motion on the floor, which we need to deal with, and I don't know if we, Ms. Newton's plea to try to get us to a, to a point, I don't know where that, where that is, where we are, if, if folks want to pull, pull the motion back, that's also a possibility, the, the, if, if you want to clean a blank, blank slate for us to start anew with motions, but if you all feel good about your motion, and that was Ms. Zook, seconded by Ms. Chambers, is the motion on the floor, which is to not review.
You want to go ahead?
No, I was gonna make it up, go ahead.
I think for my purposes, I think the purpose of reviewing is to provide questions to them that they can answer, and I don't think the school at this point can answer the questions that we might have about this law and this waiver, so for that reason, I feel comfortable with the motion to not review.
I, I would agree with that, I just, I thought if someone had a better motion to replace it with, and they wanted to share what that might be, I certainly entertain that, but I agree that this is not, not that we don't have other things that we would benefit from hearing from the school, the issue that we've been debated discussing is not about this school specifically, it's about charter waivers, and so if legal can provide a report to us either in the special meeting that the commissioner was speaking to, or in April, I would really appreciate it because it sounds very timely.
I think my only reaction, we often do ask questions, not just of the school, but, but of the department about the, the broader issues, and I do, I do think that, you know, we, we also ask, ask questions that are applicable beyond the school to give broader wisdom to this board as it's making decision on, on other things, but I, I totally get your, we've got an odd situation here, I certainly, I think we're all on the same page.
This was an amendment request, not a renewal request.
Exactly.
So this is just for the amendment, not for a renewal.
All right, let's give it another shot.
Okay. Ms. Zook?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
No.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion does pass, so no review on that, but we, we'll, do we think it makes good sense to add this to the special meeting, or do we think it makes sense to give, do y'all need a little more, more time to get, to get to April?
When is the special meeting, on the 25th? I think we can get it together for you by then, absolutely.
Okay.
That'd be great, and, and we can always delay if, if need be on a report, but we'll, we'll add it to that agenda for, for the 25th.
So the, since it does have an emergency attached to it, is that a 90, oh?
It's a July 1.
Still July 1.
It's, yeah, so it's odd that it was an emergency, but, but it is.
I just wanted to confirm, so we, is it a call or a meeting on the 25th?
Yes, so we're finished with your, your case, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's not anything that I need to do in preparation for March 25th that doesn't involve me, right?
It does not, it might be interesting because it will affect you, since you are a holder of that waiver, as of now.
Are we able to attend that?
Yes, it's an open meeting, it'll be at the, at the department in the auditorium. At 10:30 AM. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your, your questions.
All right.
And your time this morning.
All right, thank you, Ms. Broyles.
I think I have the general idea of the information you guys want, but if there's anything specific, other than what we've talked about today that you would like to know, if you will just let Gina, or the commissioner, or me, or someone know, so that I can make sure and have everything you want at the meeting.
So do you have the question, is this new, with the new law, is the salary schedule waivable, is that a word?
That, I, I say that's a word, I use it, so I hope it's a word, yes, and I will have all the questions that you asked today, I'll go back and look and make sure I have all those, but if you think of anything between now and then, I just want to make sure I get everything you guys need together.
I do think that, and, and one reason I really did want to review this case, because I thought it would allow us to get our heads around the budget implications for, for schools like this, that was, that was why I thought it was a good idea, but, and if we can begin to get some handle on what the budget implications are, and I don't know that we need to look at every school, but maybe a handful, and maybe take the name off, just so we can get a feel for how this actually plays out, or could play out, at a, at a couple of different charters that do hold these waivers, that would be really helpful, I think.
We, we can have, have that ready for you, Ms. Chambers, you asked about the meeting on the 25th.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It will be onsite, but we'll make provisions for you to call, for members to call in if they can't travel.
Thank you, and is it a two-hour meeting?
It's 10:30, we think the first, we think it will be a fairly compact meeting, but we can't make promises, because it isn't, it is a, it is a full hearing, right? So it, it could, it could take a little while, there's some procedures that ensure that it's gonna last a little while to give people time.
Thank you.
So good, all right, questions? Okay, looks good, you need to take a break? Everybody good?
Is Southeast on the phone?
They, they are on the phone, why don't we get through them, and then we'll take a quick break, since we're running Law Head, so we are down. Excuse, who's that?
Exalt Education.
We are actually done with you, we, you, we did not review, I think that, I'm sorry, it's good, it's good to hear your voice, but, but we are, we're passed you on the agenda, and we, yours was passed without any questions.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Good, take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so we are down to Southeast Arkansas Prep, could we get, who's on the phone from Southeast?
Alex Nogarola, Superintendent, Principal.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ballard?
So on February 25th, 2019, Representatives of Southeast Arkansas Repertory High School appeared before the Charter Authorizing Panel, requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request, nor request for the State Board of Education to review the decision, by the panel this minute, the State Board may exercise the right of review and conduct a hearing on the Charter Authorizing Panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Right, am I right, and are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
On this case? All right, any questions over here, Ms. Zook?
This may go into the kind of questions we would cover in a, in a review because of the way they're wanting to do the guidance counselor, and, and, this is their first year in existence, so we don't have any data as far as, unless they have some interim data, they may have, did y'all give the MAP or the ACT Aspire Interim?
We did not use the ACT Aspire Interims, but we did contract out to use MAP assessments for summer, winter, and spring.
Did you use them this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you do have that.
So you do have that data?
I do have some MAP data that I could share, yes, ma'am.
That was the only question I had before we decided to review or not.
Okay, all right, Ms. McFetrich?
So are these new waivers, I get a little confused, okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I think legal's about to answer, we were just, the question was whether these are new waivers.
Yes, and I will just clarify a little bit, I have worked with Southeast Arkansas Prep really closely on this amendment request, when they had their original charter, they had a different school leader who's not at the school anymore, Alex is now the new school leader, and they were missing several key components that they needed in order to continue operating how they had been operating, I think it was the idea that all of those waivers were in place when the previous school leader was there, and after his departure, it was realized that there were some holes in their waivers, and we worked really closely, the charter unit, we met with them, legal met with them, we worked through their waivers and ensured we got all of the holes kind of covered, so this is a little bit of a unique situation, I would say, given the background.
Ms. McFetrich?
I'm just a little uneasy about the guidance, guidance counselor waiver.
Yes.
I have a real concern about that, with the age of the student, the needs of the students, just a real strong concern, so I would really like us to review this.
All right, do you, do you need answered anything today, or you, you just feel that you, you want to pull, nothing could be, kind of, you could not be remedied, your answers, you couldn't get the answers you need today?
Well, when you look at the, they, as a small school, and I understand that, they have 88 students, but they're splitting the role of a guidance counselor among different people to do different tasks, and I have a concern that these people are actually trained to really work with students, maybe in a health crisis, or anything like that, so to me, 88 students is quite a few, quite a few students that really could use a true guidance counselor with the training that they have.
Okay, I'll see if there are any other questions, I'll come, hear a motion that you're ready to go with, but let's see if there are any other questions, any other, anything else, any questions here, Ms. McFetrich?
I'd like to move to review.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Ms. McFetrich, second by Ms. Zook, while we do a roll call on this, just to be sure.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Zook?
Yes.
All right, okay, thank you, sir, you're, you will be on the agenda for the April meeting for, for a review, obviously, obviously the department will be in, in conversation with you about that process.
Do we have to give the questions today?
Yes, we do need to go around, and, we can, we need to identify the questions, we need information from the school and our department about moving forward.
I think I'd just like more detail on how they're gonna handle the student guidance counselor issue, or waiver, excuse me.
Ms. Chambers, anything that, that pops in, okay, Ms. Zook?
I think in addition to the guidance counselor and the training of the people that it's split among, I'd also like some information on the waiver request they had regarding a board, they are not a charter management group, this, people running this charter, and I think we have people in the audience who can say, when you don't have a charter management group, then doing school is really hard, and you don't have a board, so I'd, I'd like questions about the board and why they wanted those requests, those waivers as well.
Any questions? My questions relate to the library media specialist waiver, and it, you know, the absence of a traditional library of any sort, and I've just got major concerns about the access to material, appropriate materials, and what, what preparation there is in the, in the faculty to carry out that role in the absence of a library media specialist. Ms. Dean?
Since this is the first year of this charter, and they are already, I think, using some of these waivers, they just, they thought that they had, could we go ahead and see some of the MAP data to see how, how effective they are so far?
Dr. Moore? Ms. House?
You asked mine.
All right, great, okay, is that plenty for y'all? Okay, we will return to this issue in April, and let's just take about a five to seven-minute break, since we're ahead of time.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It was hard to hear some of those, so should I disconnect with somebody at the department to make sure I get the whole list of questions I need to prepare for?
That's exactly right.
That's exactly right, they will be, they'll talk to you through the whole process, the, how much time you should expect to have, et cetera, including the questions and data that you need to provide.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank y'all. All right. Thank y'all. Turn at 11:20.
Yeah. This school is, um, the charter, this is their first year.
All right, welcome back everyone. And I failed to mention at the start, Mr. Williamson is unable to be here this month, but he will be at our next meeting. We are down to the consideration of charter authorizing panel action on the district conversion charter of the Fayetteville Virtual Academy. And we do have some folks from Fayetteville who are here, and so I'll turn it back over to Mr. Ballard.
All right. On February 25th, 2019, Representatives of Fayetteville Virtual Academy appeared before the Charter Authorizing Panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request to the State Board of Education to review their decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing on the Charter Authorizing Panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Okay. Are there any questions to my right or comments on this case? Any questions or comments over here? All right. Sorry you drove up for this, but I will entertain a motion to review or to not review.
I move to not review. Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Congratulations. On, that was, the motion was made by?
Shurries.
Ms. Dean. The second was by?
Me.
Ms. Chambers. I apologize. I failed. I'm usually pretty good, but I failed. Okay, we are down to Polk County Virtual Academy. I think we do have somebody from Polk County on the phone. Who is that?
Ask him again.
Ask him again. I had it turned on.
So who's on the phone? Polk County Virtual Academy? Okay. Okay. Let's see if we can get them on. I hate to call again.
Something.
I think it's on. What's that? It's Kelly's phone. Can you speak up, please?
Hello.
Perfect.
There we go.
We can hear you very, very well now. So can you hear me okay?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Please let us know if you can't hear any of the microphones. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ballard. We're on your case, the Polk County Virtual Academy case.
All right. On February 25th, 2019, Representatives of Polk County Virtual Academy appeared before the Charter Authorizing Panel requesting an amendment to their charter. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing of the Charter Authorizing Panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Okay. Are there any questions to my left? Are there any questions to my right? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to review or to not review this decision.
May it not to review. Second.
Motion by Ms. Newton. Excuse me, ma'am.
Nothing. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Dean. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Congratulations. We didn't have any questions after all. So we appreciate you taking time.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. We are close to lunch. One question is, do we want to go ahead and tackle the last couple of items to get Mr. Ballard and Ms. Hyatt a little freedom? Do we want to, does that sound good? Okay, if there are no objections, we'll go down to item two in the afternoon. And these are some, a variety of other amendments. These are things we've seen before that apply to a lot of charters, and so I will turn it over to Mr. Ballard.
All right. Item two is a consideration of the Charter Authorizing Panel action on the charter schools' amendments, class size, and teaching load rules. On October 29th, 2018, new ADE rules governing class size and teaching load became effective, necessitating charter schools holding the waiver of the Standards for Accreditation, Section 1-8.6. Obtain a waiver of new rules to fully effectuate the waiver topic. On February 25th, 2019, ADE staff appeared before the panel to request an approval of these waivers on behalf of several charter schools. By unanimous vote, the panel approved the request. No request for the State Board of Education to review the decisions made by the panel was submitted. The State Board may exercise the right of review and conduct a hearing on the Charter Authorizing Panel's determination at the State Board's next meeting.
And so we have several dozen charter schools that are affected by this. By this, these are affected by some changes elsewhere in our rules. Any questions to my right? Any questions? Ms. Hook?
Yes. I think because the more we have experience on the board, and the more we learn about what is important and the fact that we know that the majority of our schools are not doing all that well when it comes to at least the achievement, some of them not doing that well even with regard to growth. I would like to see some objective quantitative data that says that these waivers are in fact helping with academic performance and growth or vice versa. And some have had it long enough that we actually can compare them to people who don't have it and with like populations to see if we're giving a waiver, but in fact it's not improving growth or achievement. And I think maybe it's okay with isolated teachers in certain subjects to provide waivers, but then when you get a substitute in, and you know, what effect does that have? Because as we know, we have chronic absenteeism with teachers in some districts in the state. So I'm not comfortable doing blanket waivers, particularly in districts that could provide us some quantitative data. When we started this process, we did not have the kind of ability we do now to look at pure data, objective data, and now we do. And so I think that at the very least, the schools would need to give us or give me some additional information before I feel comfortable with a positive vote on this.
You're warming my heart, Ms. Hook. But I don't know what we do with that.
Well, I just wanted to clarify one thing. So the rules that are now, the ADE rules governing class size and teaching load, that information all used to be in the standards for accreditation and was pulled out of the standards for accreditation and put into its own rule. So all of these schools and the ones that are on the next agenda item for the 1240s, which is the exact same thing but for 1240s, they all had waivers of this exact thing under the standards for accreditation. And this is just one, the final piece of that standards for accreditation transition process, because we couldn't transition them to a new standard for accreditation because it was pulled out and put in its own rule. So these schools, these are not new waivers for these schools, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
And it's just for schools that had it, so they can continue it for the same length of time they're originally approved for it. So we're not changing any of that. We're just making it the new title of the waiver.
Right. I was aware of that, but thank you for the clarification. And I know that there is, I don't know if it's passed or not, Commissioner Elver at the legislature right now, some new things they're trying to pass about class size, and I don't know exactly what that law reads or what its implications are. So I guess my point is, maybe just a point of privilege, is when I voted for 1240 waivers or when the charter before, I haven't ever been on the charter panel, but before the board was the charter panel, and a lot of waivers were given in hopes that the innovative way or the waiver might be getting in the way of student achievement. And we've had these long enough now that we need to know, did it? And if it did, great, let's continue and maybe encourage others to do the same. But if it didn't, then why are we continuing to do something that's not benefiting the achievement or the growth of a child?
Mr. Ballard?
All right. So I was taking notes while you were warming that.
I wondered if you took shorthand.
Yeah. Yeah, I took quite a few. I just wanted to make sure you were wanting, you're wanting this report to come from the schools themselves, the data that they have collected throughout the years.
For example, the 1240 waivers, we have invited them to come back, and most of them have agreed, and Ms. McLaughlin gives those reports about how did this, you know, did the student attendance improve? Did graduation improve? Did growth, you know, are we seeing growth? Those kinds of things that we now through Act 930 and through ESSA have declared in Arkansas, these things are important. And I don't know legally whether we can bring them in to give the information or send the information to you. I doubt if we legally can take away the waiver, and I know that they need it for standards of accreditation, but I do think that they need to know if the board agrees as a whole that we want some data that shows that this waiver in fact is making a difference for students.
If you would like for it to be similar in nature to the Act 1240 progress report, you know, we usually present that on the consent agenda, and of course, if you have questions, then I make sure that everyone is either here or they call in. We could do some, right now, that report is focused on student achievement, school growth, how it's impacting the students and the staff of the district. I can go more specific if we want to be specific to graduation rate or really whatever is your discretion as far as if we need to make changes to that report. But if you like that report, then we could probably make that happen.
Yeah, and just so that we have, they would, from my point of view, that they would at least know, is this making a difference? And maybe they haven't looked at their own data, so they don't know if it's making a difference, you know? They have it, they go with it, and they have school, and you know, doing school is hard, and you get caught up in day to day. But we, I, need to know, am I voting to grant waivers that in fact are making a difference? I understand the cleanup, and I understand that we don't want to get, put people on probation or get a citation because the standards have changed. I understand that. But if you can have them understand that when they do those reports, this isn't just fill in the blank, this is saying, you know, yes, I understand you'd like to know pre and post the waiver and pre and post, you know, on those kinds of things, if that's not out of line with what we can do legally.
On the 1240 reports, those are voluntary reports that the applicant agrees to give, and I think we could request that as part of that report. When it comes to the open enrollment and district conversion charters, I think you could do something similar when granting the waiver, have it be part of a voluntary reporting. If it was mandated reporting, it may need to come from the charter panel or from you on a review hearing where that was part of your final motion, if that makes sense. So if the charter panel was reviewing, let's say, a teacher licensure waiver, they could request that that reporting be part of the granting of the waiver, and then you could approve that, or if they didn't do that, you could move to review and then add that as a condition of your approval in your review. I don't think you could say today that all schools have to have this report and make it mandatory. I think that would be too far outside of kind of the authority.
Commissioner.
Yeah. Let me see if I can maybe simplify this. What I hear you saying is not a school by school, but as a policy. Is this policy that we've adopted and going on the last several years of granting waivers, is it having a positive, a negative, or a, or no impact? And we have data, so Dr. Arora's sitting back there, yeah, and I know this kind of take her by surprise, but we also have Dr. Eric Flowers that we brought in house to, this is the kind of thing we want him to do. Okay, so I don't think it's really going after reports and getting reports from the schools or the districts. I'll make sure, and you can confirm this, I think it's, the years of data that we now have, can it be correlated? Can it be analyzed? Can it be determined if we are seeing any type of impact with this policy that's been in place for several years on student achievement?
And I think, yes, I think that, but I do think we have to, we have to be careful with this because we, we obviously, many of these schools get a variety of waivers at the same time, but that I think we now do probably have enough data to do multivariate analyses to see which of these things are really popping in terms of making a difference and which of them are not. And that's, you're totally right. I think that's where this state needs to go. I think it's exactly where this board needs to go in these decisions moving forward. And I do think what you're, when we see a bunch of waivers, updates like this, it does really highlight a big question. Has this, you know, class size, teaching load stuff really mattered?
So we, so I can get with Dr. Flowers and the team here and Dr. Arora, because I think together that group can design a study that will give you what you're asking for, hopefully. I mean, with the years of data that we now have that, you know, can help inform where we go from here.
Could be like on reports day?
It can be whenever, yeah, I mean, we could, we can, and I don't know the timing of this undertaking, but we can bring that back on a Friday reports day and provide information.
Because when schools come in the future, we need to be able to, when schools come in the future, we need to be able to say to them, I see you're requesting this, but we have five or 10 or whatever years of this charter or this other district that has it, and it really isn't making any difference. So is there some reason other than student achievement that you're wanting this waiver? I know that 1240, they don't have to answer our questions, but so far, no one's refused to answer the questions that we have. But yes, I'm wanting overall data, not school-specific data. I mean, the overall data will be school, but yes.
And I, and just, I mean, I would love a report that looked at all these, because we've got that data with all the different kinds of waivers, which of the ones are really mattering? We need a comprehensive report. It can't be piecemeal, because we're not going to know if this waiver is really changing the dependent variable or not. We need all those variables. Ms. Chambers?
No, I love what you just said and this conversation, and I do think it's time. I do think we have enough data that it would, it would help inform a number of other decisions. I do think it'll be a challenge when a number of waivers gone in at the same time to isolate what's impacting or causal. But the other thing that may be a surprise is a combination of things that we wouldn't have even thought to ask will emerge out of the data, is this is the sweet spot, and hope we can go with the analysis that way, but really appreciate and applaud the request. Would love to see it.
You good, Ms. Hook?
Yes. All that said, I do move that we approve two and three.
We need to do them individually. Yeah, we'll need to do them individually, so. So, 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 motion is to approve the waivers for the several dozen districts that were listed in the report. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hook, second by Ms. Dean. Is there further discussion on this topic? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And let's go ahead and do three, and I think we have an addition to the list on this item.
Before Reggie introduces, there was one school that has one single Act 1240 waiver transition that was omitted from the spreadsheet that was uploaded on the agenda, and so I've got copies for you guys that I'll pass out while Reggie's talking, which is just the one that was omitted.
So, item three in the action agenda for the afternoon is just the Act 1240 class size and teaching load transition waiver. And so we have several attachments in, Mary Claire Hyatt is passing out the final one that was not attached.
Okay, so very similar to the previous item, but these are the 1240 version of that plus Melbourne. Any questions or comments? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Newton, second by Ms. Chambers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we're good. So lunch is here, but we can, but Fort Smith is also here, and we could actually get done with this item and get.
Some of the Fort Smith folks are here, but not the district.
I mean, the, okay, they're not going to arrive till 12. Okay, so it's time, we need to take a break, and so that everybody will come, we will, we'll try to be back, we'll be back between 1:15 and 1:30. How about we say that? We won't start before 1:15.
And then take public comment after that.
And we will take public comment after that, so that gives us a little more flexibility this afternoon, but still get us finished early. So we will return to this room at 1:15.
Awesome. Are you coming tomorrow to the schools or are you going to?
No.
All right, we're following. All right, we're following...
We're an amazing, amazing facility, but amazing students. This is really inspiring visit. So we really appreciate you taking the time to make it happen. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anything that my colleagues would like to add to that?
Dr. Bartha, I do have a comment, and I hope that maybe some of the other districts are listening. The facility here, the technology here is fantastic. But I want to add to that for the districts, you don't have to have all of this to do some of the amazing things that they're doing here. They're turning kids loose and letting them learn. The depth of knowledge that kids are getting here is just unbelievable. They're not just getting that surface knowledge that, you know, sometimes teachers think we've got to get it all covered. They're letting kids, they're turning kids loose and letting them learn. And that how much they're learning and the depth that they're going to is so great. And, you know, it comes from teachers having vision and administrators having visions of letting students, let learning be student-focused. And so I wish that every district could, you know, send a representative and let them see what's going on. Because again, the technology and the building is fantastic. But, you know, again, you don't have to have all of this to make it work. So, but thank you again for letting us come and see what learning for kids could be.
Thank you. All right, I made, just to let everybody know where we are. We have one action item left on the agenda, and then we do have some public comment. I made an error this morning on the second item. The consideration of the class size and teaching load rule amendments. That needed to be, it was passed as a motion in favor of that. That was, the proper motion actually would have been to not review. And so that was my mistake. We got it right on number three, but not on number two. If there's not objection, I will say my suggestion is for us to have recognized that motion as the proper motion, which was the do not review, which has the same clear intent as the motion that was passed. Is there objection to that? Okay, all right, and I apologize again. Okay, so we are back up to item one. This is an Act 1240 waiver from the Fort Smith School District. I do want to also note that we do have a public comment on this item, not general. It is somebody who signed up today. And so at the proper time, I'll ask for a motion for public comment on that as well. But I'll turn it over to Kelly McLaughlin right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly McLaughlin, ADE. Today, we do have Fort Smith School District here to ask for waiver for class size and teaching load. Just as a reminder, the school district will have 20 minutes to make their presentation. And for the opposition, they will have that 20 minutes as well. And the district will then have five minutes to respond before the Q and A begins. Also, as a reminder, Act 1240 of 2015 allows a school district to petition the State Board of Education for all or some of the waivers that are granted to an open enrollment public charter school that serve those students who reside in their school district. We do have representatives of the Fort Smith School District here to appear before you for these waivers. Their 90 days will expire on May 14th, 2019, and they have requested for five years. So that would be ending on June 30th, 2024. You will want to swear in the following. We have Mr. Martin Mahan, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Darbo, Professor and Dean of the UAFS College of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, Dr. Monica Riles, Interim Dean of the UAFS College of Education, and Ron Orick, Executive Director of the UAFS Bab Center for Student Professional Development.
All right, great. So if everybody who plans to testify, if you could stand and raise your right hand, assuming you're not an attorney, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
All right, then as you heard, you have up to 20 minutes to make your presentation.
First of all, good afternoon, Commissioner Key and members of the State Board of Education. As mentioned, my name's Marty Mahan. I'm Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Campus Support at Fort Smith School District. And I'm pretty excited to be here today with this initiative that I've worked out with a collaborative group from the University of Arkansas-Fort Smith. And from UA Fort Smith, I have Dr. Riley, who's been introduced, and Mr. Orick. Unfortunately, Dr. Darbo had another commitment, couldn't make it today. Also, all of you have received a package. Just want to kind of go over what's in that package. You should have a letter of support from our superintendent, Dr. Drew Baker. And within that letter of support, you will find quotations of support from some of our board members. Also in the package, you'll have a letter from Dr. Darbo, who couldn't make it, but he has a letter of support from the University of Arkansas as the dean of the STEM program there. Also, you'll have a letter of explanation from myself. And in that letter, you will find quotes of support from teachers that have either worked with novice teachers as a mentor teacher or had experience with what we traditionally call student-teaching semester-long positions. They have experience in both of those areas. There is also an email exchange from Arkansas State Teachers Association with our superintendent there. And there's also a very recent article from Talk Business about our school board meeting Monday night, which we talked about this particular initiative. So you'll have all that information there in front of you for your review. This kind of started a couple of years ago. Actually, I attended an Arkansas Department of Ed meeting through ARCASPA, which is an organization for human resources. And the topic of how do we retain and recruit teachers, young people, to the profession of teaching? And we were bouncing a lot of ideals around. And I just mentioned, you know, a lot of professions that people look up to, that they are selecting over teaching careers have internships that have some form of compensation. And so from that ideal, I went back to Fort Smith. And we have met on a regular basis with UA Fort Smith in lots of different avenues. And one of the avenues is in teaching in the College of Education. And met with Dr. Riley at UAFS and mentioned the fact that I had brought up, is there a model out there that we can look at where we can compensate intern teachers? And maybe make the profession more attractive and maybe make it more of an incentive? And also to help with economics with a fourth-year student in college? Maybe touch on student loan issues and provide a livable wage? And at that point, Dr. Riley took off of that and actually went and created a committee of people. First of all, she met with Dr. Drew Baker to get his support to create a committee of people. And with his support, she went out and created a committee, included UA Fort Smith staff members, included Fort Smith Public Schools staff members, and included a couple of students from the University of Arkansas College of Education that are about to be interns or have gone through the process of interning or student teaching, I should say. As a collaborative team, Fort Smith, UA Fort Smith, and the students met several times over about a year period. And we also looked at, through the information that Dr. Riley provided, we looked at a model out of the University of West Georgia. And in this model, they had compensated some intern teachers over a five-year period. And I believe, I think it was around, it's over 30 interns, 34, 35, around that area. They retained all of those interns with this paid model except for one over that five-year period, which is pretty neat practice. So we looked at ways we could replicate that model with a cooperative with UA Fort Smith in our own district. So what we have looked at is first of all, identify a highly effective mentor teacher. And I'll just use grade three as an example. This model really will work very well, K six. But in a building, we have 19 elementary schools, but in a building where there's more than one third-grade teacher, you have, let's just say we have three third-grade teachers. So you take a highly effective mentor teacher that's already one of our staff members in the third grade. We have an open position in third grade that's yet to be filled. So we take the highly effective mentor supervising teacher out of his or her role as teacher. We hire an intern teacher from UA Fort Smith for a year-long internship. They don't do the semester-long student teaching, but they hire from the beginning. They participate in professional development. They have the experience of opening the school. They have the experience of the holidays. They have the experience of the lulls in the profession. And they have the experience of closing the school with the support of a highly effective intern that gives them end-time support and resources. But at the same time, when you pull this highly effective novice or mentor supervising teacher, we fill that position with an intern from UA Fort Smith for a full year as well. So you have a highly effective teacher that has extended their reach to two classrooms, two sets of third-grade students, and also two intern teachers for a full year. And in the hopes that this extension will affect student learning at a higher level because you have a highly effective supervising teacher there influencing, co-teaching, model teaching, providing critical feedback, providing reflective practice. Looking at the end of the day, say, what could we do differently? What really went well? What didn't go well? End time on that day. And so the impact would be exponential for the students in the classroom and for the teachers that are learning the trade. And so with this model, the intern teachers, two of them, would both earn 50% of a first-year salary. They would get access to benefits. They get access to Arkansas teacher retirement. And they would have a year of experience to go toward their first teaching position on the salary schedule. And the intern would be oversaw by a, again, a highly effective supervising teacher. They would also be a beneficiary of a stipend. Now, the waiver is in place because one of the things that we do every year is we get cycle reports on a continual basis, the Arkansas Department of Ed site, and we get flagged or cited for someone that goes over the allowed amount of students in a class. We can't assign these students to the intern teachers because they are not licensed and they do not have their bachelor's degree. There's other pathways with a degree that they could get a provisional license, but not in this model. So we would assign those students to the mentor supervising teacher. And so when it does show up on a cycle as an issue or citation, we would reconcile it with the waiver showing we have permission, we have a waiver specifically for this pilot research-based practice. And that would be submitted to reconcile that issue. So that is the rationale for this request. Now, what would we hope to have happen through this process? Certainly want to enhance and extend the reach of the highly effective mentor teacher that supervises the two interns and also has an effect on the classroom instruction itself. Allow student interns to truly be immersed in learning. I know that was mentioned even in this setting, in this particular school. You see that full immersion in the learning practice. And we'd like to replicate that with student teaching interns for a full year. Allow student interns to experience all aspects of teaching. The current model of student teaching is a semester-long. You know, you observe for six, eight, 10 weeks. And you might get six or 10 sessions of teaching. And then you roll out to a full-time position in next year. Traditionally, and I'm just using the word traditionally, there's a struggle with classroom management. There's a dip in October where you decide as a teacher, do I really want to do this? And so you don't have that support. You don't have that support that's right there in the classroom with you. You don't have that end-time support, and there's a highly, a higher likelihood we would lose that person. So that would be one of the aspects as well. We also want to create a student intern system in which support is provided again at the point of need. Support student interns at the point of need with the UA Fort Smith staff that will be there to support. The mentor teacher that will be there to support. The Fort Smith Public Schools Professional Development Department that would support. And then the colleagues in the building. Our elementary schools have fabulous teachers, and they're going to be there to support and attend professional development, be in PLCs, collaborate, and grow. And then finally, we definitely want to improve teacher retention above all, and also teacher recruitment. So the waiver that we have in front of you, the request, allows us to pilot this program next year over a five-year period. It allows us to provide a highly effective mentor supervising teacher to be the teacher of record for two classes. It also gives us the opportunity to look at the research and study this over a year-long process and see what is good, what needs to be tweaked, what needs to be adjusted, and make those adjustments as you would with any pilot. and make those adjustments as you would with any pilot. Selfishly, myself, I really would like to see this be a model for teaching across the state. I'm just so impressed with the UA-Fort Smith's ability to embed a semester of college courses in the actual field experience, so that the student adds that to their full-year internship experience. There's not an additional amount. It's embedded. It's a pretty neat, innovative practice. And with that, I would like for Dr. Riley to come up as well to talk about this initiative and this proposal from the UA-Fort Smith perspective.
Thank you.
I am Monica Riley. I'm the interim Executive Director for the School of Education at UA-Fort Smith, and I want to talk to you from the PowerPoint that you have in front of you. I'm just going to point out a couple of pages to you. If you will look at, let's start with page eight. Dr. Mahan talked a little bit about the benefits of this program. I would tell you that for UA-Fort Smith, the benefits of this program is the competitiveness that will be embedded within this program, because we will limit it to two this first year, two interns that are able to do this, and I believe that will raise the bar for all of our interns, for all of our students to move forward. And then, at the university, the students will be able to come to the table more prepared as they move into the field. UAFS will report to ADE each year after we do this, report the results of it. It is my intent to be in touch with those, as the executive director, to be in touch with those students on a regular basis, so that I'm collecting the data that I need to monitor the success of the program. If you flip over then to page ten, we'll talk about the requirements of the teacher candidates. They will have had to have passed all of their licensure exams before they're able to do this, so they will be ready, just like they would to walk into their internship. They will have passed all those exams. They will have completed all of the courses that they need to be proficient in the science of reading. We have those science of reading standards embedded in our courses, have had for a long time, and are quite successful around the science of reading at UA-Fort Smith, which as I know is a concern right now. Actually, we have, for the first round of data for the seventeen-eighteen year, we had a ninety-four percent pass rate on the science of reading exam, and actually, a hundred percent of the students have passed, because the one that didn't pass went back and retook and passed. So we feel pretty confident that our candidates would be able to do what they need to do in a classroom around the science of reading. And I just feel like with this model, that we are preparing the best teachers that we can prepare. The two interns will be our top interns, and they will actually be interviewed by us before we allow them to be interviewed by the school district, and then they would be interviewed by the school district and hired at that point.
Thank you very much. I think what I'll do is see what questions the board members have, and then entertain a motion to accept public comment on this item. So I'll just start with Ms. House. Do you have any questions?
Do you have a plan in place if, like, how are you going to evaluate your teacher interns that are in the classroom serving? So they'll have a mentor, but are you going to go through the test model, or what is your, what's your plan?
We will treat them like a new teacher through the test model, but they also will have another level of evaluation just through their college coursework as well.
Okay.
Our students are currently evaluated with the Danielson model through the test, and they will receive that from the university faculty as well as from the school district.
Dr. Moore, anything?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, for Dr. Riley, how much time will these interns have spent in classrooms prior to this year?
If they are an elementary major, they will have spent ninety hours in the field already prior to this experience. If they are, well, a middle-level or an elementary person would have done that.
And will they have an advisor or an instructor from UAFS also working with them during this year?
Yes. Currently, in the model that we have with just our regular internship, the students have, five students are assigned to a faculty member, and that faculty member evaluates them. These two students would be a part of the five group and would have that university supervisor. In addition, what the interns generally don't have is my touch, and I would be involved in this highly, especially during this pilot year.
That's great. So the first year would be to have two teachers. What would be through the rollout after that?
We would have to assess it this first year at the end of the year to see where we're at. Logistically speaking, over five years, you would hope to have at least, if it was very successful, add one maybe per year, but logistically speaking, I think we might max out at four highly effective mentor teachers with opening positions. It really all depends on the open positions. It depends on the grade level configuration. Is it in a position where there's more than one teacher? Because some of our elementars are smaller than others. Is it the right fit? And if it is, we'll take advantage of that if we see success. But I do not see us ever having more than four mentor supervising teachers. And I would also add, this is, the rationale explains that this waiver is specific to this pilot program. Any changes or adjustments would be required in different waiver. This is only for us to pilot this research-based program.
Is there a conversation about doing it at the secondary level, or just the elementary level?
That is a conversation that we want to have. The reason for starting with the elementary and the middle-level programs, students in the elementary and middle-level program, by the time that they get to that semester before their internship, they are in pedagogy classes. Secondary folks are still in content area courses, so it would take a lot of revision of the program in order to get there, but certainly that is a conversation on the table.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
Ms. Newton, anything?
So right now, you're only looking at Fort Smith?
We want to start small, so we can monitor the outcome.
So if the outcomes are what you want, are you going to be open to other districts coming on board, or?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. And then, you mentioned that, that right now, that you're only thinking about K-six. Is that also from the college, you're only thinking about K-six?
We had talked about K-eight, but we're going to do what, with our partnership with Fort Smith, what suits what they need.
Okay. So why, I guess my question is, why are you thinking not secondary?
Again, currently, the secondary classes that the students take prior to internship, that semester before internship, they're still in content area classes. K-eight folks are in pedagogy classes, which makes a huge difference in what we're able to embed. There is a conversation with the secondary, but it will take program revision to get there, and so we're just kind of holding on and having those conversations as we roll this out.
So right now, this would only be at most K-eight?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you mentioned the mentor pay. The mentor is going to get the regular classroom pay, and then also a stopwind above that?
Yes, we will look at a stopwind above that. We pay mentors an additional amount currently, but we would pay a stipend for this particular program for the fact that they will be the teacher record for two classes, and of course, they'll be mentoring two different teachers.
Okay. And will it be up to the mentor teacher, how she divides her time between the two?
We want to, we've had discussions about this. We want it to be a fifty-fifty break, but we don't want to define what fifty-fifty looks like. I think it'll depend on instructional practices that are going on at certain days. It may depend on support needed in areas, but we do want it to be equitable in the support, but we also want that supervising teacher to be accessible at any given time for both people.
Okay.
And they would not be, another thing we talked about, to be clear too, they still would be housed in one classroom, just as a, they're not going to be removed from that classroom, they're not going to be somewhere else. They're going to be there, present. Now, they may be in and out of both classrooms, but they will be set up in one classroom there.
Okay. I thought I understood what you just said, so I got confused. That the mentor teacher does not have her own class?
Yes. She, both, he or she mentor teacher would have their own class, but the intern teacher would take over that class. They would have a workspace there.
Okay. So she will have her own class plus two other classrooms?
She will have her own workspace and her own class, but a new intern that works a year-long would take over her instructional aspect of his or her class.
Okay. All right. So there's only going to be two classrooms of kids?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the mentor teacher would not be teaching day-to-day, they'd be supporting day-to-day.
Okay. All right. Okay. There was one more question I had. Let me find, oh, you showed in your packet where you had board support and then support of the College of Education. Have you talked to your teachers and the parents of your district? What kind of support are you getting in that direction?
We have had limited discussion with parents and teachers prior to this rollout. Now, I did reach out to some teachers yesterday to float the ideal out to get some responses, but as far as the collaborative session, no, ma'am, we did not do that.
I would definitely encourage you to do that, because they're the ones...
And I think as we go through this pilot proposal this year, that will be part of the process as well, to gather that additional data.
Get feedback, yes. Definitely, definitely, I think you need to do that. Okay. I think that's all I've got right now.
Okay. I've got a question that actually follows on Ms. Newton's question, and it comes back to the newspaper article on the school board meeting and the concern raised by one teacher there. I just want to be clear for the record that this waiver request only applies to this pilot and is not a broader waiver.
Absolutely. We certainly follow in the direction of the Arkansas Department of Ed and the State Board of Education. Any changes or tweaks to any type of waiver would certainly come back to you all for approval, only for this pilot program.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Dean, Ms. Newton?
We approve something similar, but not exactly the same, in the UA Monticello-Dumas and Batesville-Southside and UCA. So I would recommend that you all, you can do it through Skype or however, but like a group of what I call critical friends, so they can share things they've learned, things that we should have done differently, things that they've changed to, so that if they've invented a wheel, you don't have to reinvent it if it fits your program. And then there will be things that they can learn from you as well. And secondly, I love the idea, because so many times, the internships are second semester, and the first thing we want a teacher to do is start school. And starting school and ending school is a whole lot different. So I commend this and touch base with those others and see if, you know, what they think and what they've learned.
Great. Dr. Hill, Ms. Chambers, anything?
I too. I like the sounds of this. It feels more like an apprenticeship, which I think is, has a different connotation and benefit to the recipient. The question, I'm assuming this too will be successful. So when you think about, you'll establish a mentoring teacher and these two interns in a year. The next year, will you deliberately move it to a different teacher, different class, or is the intention to keep that same teacher, because they're already good at mentoring, and rotating interns through that particular individual? So question is, keep it, or do you move it around to get more experience with it?
From my perspective, I've actually thought about that, and I probably would lean, it really will depend on open positions and moving teachers around, but I would lean on trying to utilize that particular person, because they will have established themselves as mentors already, if we can. If not, we'll look at constant support and training for new ones in other schools. And UA-Fort Smith, Dr. Riley can speak to the support they will provide to that position as well.
We understand the importance of whoever that mentor teacher is, being a real coach and understanding the coaching perspective, and so our intent is to provide some coaching for that mentor teacher as well, to help them gain the coaching perspective that they need. And so we'll be, we'll be working on that and making that happen.
Okay. Ms. McFetters, and then I see Ms. Newton pop.
I have a question on the contract. It says each intern will receive a year contract, and that they will receive fifty percent of a first-year teacher's contract. Maybe explain to me what that means exactly? Is it just financially, or is it?
Yes, ma'am. It will not be a renewable contract. It'll be a one-year contract, and thirty-eight, we start out thirty-eight fifty, I believe, first-year teacher. So we would just take that fifty percent cost. That would allow us to employ two intern teachers for the price of that one position that was already vacated, and then also allow us to provide them a wage that would, it could be used for paying for that fourth year of college, or it could be used for living expenses. But, and also, the other important aspect for me is it gives them the second year on the salary schedule, when they go out for their next contract. Gives them your experience. Also gives them access to benefits, and gives them access to teacher retirement. So it's just, it's not a renewable contract, just a one-year contract based on our current salary schedule.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Newton?
That was my question, was the teacher retirement. Have you reached out to someone in the teacher retirement system to make sure that this is going to go over with them?
I have spoken to our payroll department, and they feel strongly that we will be able to do that. Now, I haven't specifically talked to ATRS, but currently, like a substitute teacher, they have access to ATRS, so with the fact that they're going to be working full-time, I feel pretty comfortable that they can get that access, but still not completely confirmed, but we will continue to work on that.
I would recommend, you never know how long red tax sometimes takes.
Yes. Ms. House?
Yeah. Just as a classroom teacher, and as someone who is overseeing many student interns, I love this idea. I love the idea that I could lead within my classroom, I'm not completely taken out of it, but I would strongly encourage you to provide some additional training to these teachers, because mentoring an intern for a few weeks, for a few lessons, doesn't look like mentoring a teacher full-time. So I would definitely encourage looking at some leadership training, because it's a different ballgame. But I'm excited about this idea. I think it's innovative and it's interesting.
Great. Okay. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to accept public comment on this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, great. And Donella Smither has signed up for public comment on this, and, Smither, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, great. You have up to three minutes. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me. My name is Donella Smither, and I am a new teacher to the Fort Smith School District. I'm not a new public school teacher. I have twenty-seven years of experience, but I'm new to the Fort Smith School District, and I'm also a member of the Fort Smith Education Association. You may remember that the president of FSEA spoke in front of you all last December, when our administration applied for a waiver to take the PPC election process away from the professional educators. If you'll recall, during that time, FSEA came to you to represent a large number of concerned teachers who felt as if their voices were not being considered in the decision-making process. On that day, FSEA brought you over fifty letters signed by FSPS employees articulating their apprehension towards being excluded from an important school district decision. One of those letters was mine. "I've never done anything like this before, but I have become so concerned that I come to you today to give a platform to educators who feel dismissed and disregarded while the administration continues to make unilateral decisions without their input." Last Thursday, educators of Fort Smith discovered that their administration was applying for a waiver on class size and class load, not through communication from the administration, but instead through the posting of upcoming business on the ADE website. Concern spread quickly among Fort Smith educators, because no one appeared to know anything behind the waiver and how it would affect the district. After reading through the district's rationale for the waiver, I could not find any connection between the waiver and the given rationale. FSEA contacted the board for some clarity, but have received no contact since then. The final page of every waiver request form gives a list of suggested procedures to be followed by the district. The latter half reads as follows. Discuss the transparency of the process and methods used for garnering support for the waivers. Efforts included methods, times, dates, places for notifying, and including all stakeholders: students, teachers, other staff, parents, community members, school board, board resolutions. Feedback received from stakeholders and how it was and will be used in the district plan. I do not know of any students, teachers, parents, or community members who have been educated or informed on this process. I found no notifications of meetings or town halls. I cannot find in the school board minutes where it was discussed and resolved to purpose. I'm not here to argue for or against the waiver, and I'm not here to argue whether that's a good program, because we all know that it is. I've student-taught, I understand, and I think it's a great program. I just want to make sure that... I just want to make sure that we're doing and making the right decisions in the process. I want to, I'm here to give all teachers in our district a voice. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smither. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate that. And I, you know, I hear you, and I think it follows on Ms. Newton's question as well. And it has been a frustration with the 1240 process that, you know, the input of teachers really has been very hit and miss and too often missed. Because if these programs are going to work, they have to have the support of teachers and staff long-term, and I think that districts are being short-sighted if they fail to take that step in these waiver processes. So I appreciate the comment, no matter the merits of this proposal, so. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for the department. So this waiver is just specific to these two classrooms? Is that correct, or however many they have in the future?
Mary Claire Hyatt, Arkansas Department of Education. It's specific to the program. So based on what they're saying today, if they only have the two classrooms, it would just apply to the classrooms in the program. And the reason it's this waiver, the class size and teaching load waiver, as he explained, is because the teacher of record will still be the licensed teacher that's kind of overseeing both classrooms. So it's not that one classroom in and of itself really would exceed, but it's that is the teacher of record for both classrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Additional comments, questions? Y'all ready? I would entertain a motion on this waiver, proper motion to approve or disapprove as presented.
I move to approve the waiver as presented and appreciate the fact that you did make a commitment to us verbally that you will go back and talk with the people who represent your community on the board and also explain that every teacher's not going to have to go over their load. Because I can see when I read it, you know, I wasn't sure about that. And we ask everyone who comes in for a 1240 waiver if they've involved their stakeholders and their teachers. So with that, I move that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So a motion by Ms. Zook, a second by Ms. McFetridge. Y'all, voice vote? Are y'all, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same side. I'll make one of my last three-month comments. And if the board does get at 1240 rulemaking authority ultimately, I really do hope that the board will include feedback from all the stakeholders in the district as part of the process of evaluating 1240 waivers moving forward. So I just want to add that to the list. All right. We are through with our agenda. We thank the folks from Fort Smith who have come out. We are down to public comment. We did have a handful of people sign up, and I have totally lost that piece of paper. Do you have the, all right. Thanks, Ms. Wyndham. Okay. So first off, note that Mr. Gary Hall had written a public comment, and he should have received that earlier, so that was one of the three. Gabriel Kinghorn? Gabriel Kinghorn? Okay. Kelly Houses? Going, going. Gone? Okay. So our public comment isn't here. So is there any...
There were some ladies that walked out with the lady who did speak. I wonder if that was one of the people? I don't know.
They are not here now.
I don't recognize them.
Okay.
It was not? Okay.
Okay. We are at the end of our agenda, and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, thank you for a great, great meeting space here and a great day. And the board has a long day tomorrow, starting at 8:00 a.m., but we'll see you at dinner tonight. That's good. All right. Thanks.